I just have to wait for YouTube to come on and so we can be live and then I have to mute it so that it doesn't interfere with what we're doing. There we go. All right. I believe we're all set and ready to go. Welcome to the September 17th Town Board meeting with the town of Unionville. I'd like to call the meeting to order and salute to the flag, please, if you could join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we sit down, I would like to just ask that we have a moment of silence for those 13 Americans that were killed in Afghanistan. That happened after our last town board meeting. And I'd also like to add, let's hope that every one of those Americans gets out of Afghanistan as soon as possible. Let's have a moment for all of them. Thank you very much. So I'd like a motion, why don't we start with approving the minutes from the July 15th meeting? We're going to defer the August minutes until the next meeting. Is there a second? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye, all right, minutes passed. We'll take the next ones up on October 7th. Okay, so tonight we have and we're very excited to have a special presentation from Brandy Nelson. She is going to be talking about a subject that we've been, the board has been talking about over the last few meetings and work sessions. So Brandy, I'm going to let you introduce yourself. I've got you written on the agenda. You're an engineer and you can give us a little bit about your background. And we'd like to welcome you. Thank you for coming on tonight. I'm going to mute and we're going to let you take it away. You've got a good topic.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. I appreciate the time this evening and I hope that we can maybe have a dialogue. My name is, for your record, my name is Brandy Nelson. I am a licensed professional engineer and also a vice president at Tie and Bond. We're a multidisciplinary engineering, environmental science and planning firm serving communities throughout the Northeast. And we are based in Massachusetts, but we have a local office in Rhinebeck. And we've had that office for about four years. And so we're really happy to be in the area. I myself have worked in the Hudson Valley for municipalities and private developer clients for about 20 years. And I live in Western Massachusetts, in Great Barrington. And I had an opportunity to chat with the supervisor a couple of months ago with relationship to some work I'm doing supporting Uniondale's efforts with the Climate Smart Communities Initiative. And we got to talking about the legislation that the state of New York has passed around legalization of cannabis in the state and what that might mean for a community like yours. As I said, I live in Great Barrington. I'm also my town's planning board chair. And in that capacity, I've worked for the last six years with our town to develop appropriate land use regulations that fit what our town is focused on. Also have had some opportunities to conduct some reviews of various land uses around the cannabis industry. And Tie and Bond as an organization has also supported communities throughout Massachusetts evaluating their community's specific focus on how to address legalization in the Massachusetts communities. And also working with cannabis developers who may be adaptively reusing an existing building or proposing new facilities. So I have probably some broad knowledge on the different types of uses associated with legalization of cannabis. And I'm hoping I can share with you guys just some observations I have from Western Massachusetts' perspective. We have many communities that are similar to Unionville with a strong rural focus and folks that love open space and agricultural land uses. And that this new industry may pose some unique challenges for you. And I just want to offer myself as a resource for perspective and information. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. And I understand from talking to the supervisor that you are aware of the legislation that was passed and you're also aware that the state is giving all the towns an opportunity to opt out of retail sales and onsite consumption facilities. And you must do that by the end of this year or you don't have the option to opt out. So I think given the fact that the town is aware of that and has that idea or decision making kind of on its radar. I think that's great because what the state has not done so far is really get their commissions up and running to give the towns any details about what the particulars of a cannabis facility in any of its forms ranging from an agricultural cultivation facility to a retail sales facility to an onsite consumption facility, what form that might take. And so what I can do is just share with you some of the observations we've had. You know, Great Barrington's a town of about 8,000 people. We do have a village center. I would liken us similar to maybe Pauling where you've got your outlying rural area and then you've got your village center. In Massachusetts, villages are not separate municipal entities. So we have what we would call like a downtown area. In the case of Massachusetts, legalization of cannabis came following a citizens referendum. So it was very much driven by the citizens of the state. And what each town had at their disposal from the referendum was data on how many people voted for and how many people voted against legalization of cannabis. And that provided us some guide rails on understanding, was there a majority supporting or a majority against? And I think that that can help a community make decisions that support what the voters in the community want to see in the community. It sounds to me like you guys have done some public outreach around this. You know, New York has taken a different approach. It was sort of legislated on the communities. And so you're probably having to do some catch-up work in the community to find out how the community feels about it. So good for you if that's what you're doing. I had shared with the supervisor a fact sheet that the state of New York has put together for local governments. It covers some of the high points of cannabis. I don't know if that's been, if that link has been shared out. It has been, okay, great. Yeah, so that's got a really high level overview of kind of the direction the state thinks they're going to be going. I think what's important to understand is that before any of these retail or cultivation facilities or processing facilities would be able to operate, they would need to go through some sort of licensing process. And the rules for that have not been established yet. So the state is going to need to populate their commission or their Office of Cannabis Management with a group of people who will undertake a rulemaking process. And that rulemaking process will have a public comment phase. And so as you guys are starting to talk about issues of concern in your community, you'll want to keep apprised of where the state is in that rulemaking process so that when they have their public comment period, you have the opportunity to comment on those rules and make sure that the views of the town of Unionville are made public at that point in time and can be incorporated into any rulemaking. I think sometimes it's hard for the state to create rules that address all the issues of all the different types of communities throughout the state of New York. You know, a community in Westchester may have different issues than a community in Duchess County. And so it'll be important for you guys to be ready to participate in that process. You may be aware that opt-out is specifically for your onsite consumption and retail facilities. But opt-out does not affect things like cultivation or processing or delivery services or nurseries or personal growth and consumption of cannabis plants. So those are areas that as you're thinking about how you want to approach any sort of land use restrictions that you might put in place related to cannabis, you want to focus on those areas. I can tell you from Massachusetts' standpoint and from the town of Great Barrington's standpoint, we have both rural agricultural areas, we have neighborhood areas, residential areas, and we have commercial business areas as well as light industrial areas. So what we did was we took a look at our land use pattern and we tried to address and assign the various cannabis-related land uses to those areas so that we didn't have a processing facility in a residential neighborhood, for instance. Cannabis has got some interesting characteristics that you want to consider, maybe from a nuisance standpoint. I don't know if anyone in Unionville is growing hemp. Do you guys have any hemp farms currently operating? Oh, Mr. Welsh, I can see your lips are moving, but I can't hear what you're saying. I'm sorry, sir, you're muted.
I said, we don't have any that we are aware of, but there is a large facility right over the border in the adjoining town that we're familiar with.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so then you're aware that field-grown cannabis, you know, when it goes to flower in the late summer, early fall, it does produce an odor. And so there are some issues related to what could be considered a nuisance by some people that you may want to think about addressing in some of your zoning with setbacks or maybe the selection of parcels that could support cannabis operations. I know some of the feedback we've gotten from communities is that some communities have said they see cannabis as a cash crop that could help support a farmer who is maybe struggling otherwise and could be a means of allowing a family farm to stay in business. Kind of similar to the argument that is sometimes made with solar facilities where a small portion of land might be allocated to solar and the farmer could collect the lease on that solar installation for a number of years and that provides a baseline income to the community. The other thing, though, if you're going to have field-grown cannabis, there are some nuisance issues. Greenhouses, we've had several applications for greenhouses come before our town as well as some of the adjacent towns here. Greenhouses can grow three to four crops per year. And so that issue of odor isn't then limited to your late summer, early fall. It becomes an issue that is more prevalent at quarterly intervals throughout the year as the greenhouse production operates. The other thing with greenhouses is that they need to consume a fair amount of power for providing illumination, water, humidity, and temperature within the optimal ranges. And so there can be issues of night sky issues, glare issues, and fan noise from ventilation fans that you may want to think about as far as land use regulations that you might be considering. I would expect, I know in Massachusetts, before cannabis was legalized, we did some research in anticipation of land use issues. We did some research in Colorado and in Oregon, did some fact-finding there, contacted some communities that had operations. And in both those instances, the states had put out model local laws related to the different cannabis operations, so cultivation, processing, delivery, retail. And then the states handed that off to the individual municipalities. Municipalities were able to tailor the land use regulations in accordance with the model local law, but tailor it down to the specifics of your particular community. That's what we had in Massachusetts as well. So I suspect through the rulemaking process that the state of New York would likely do something similar and provide you a model local law. But I'd say at this point in time, you probably want to just go on a fact-finding mission. You are absolutely welcome. I'm happy to put you in touch with some of the facilities over in Western Massachusetts that wouldn't be too far from Unionville. Sheffield is roughly across the border from Salisbury, Connecticut. So up to Armenia over Salisbury and up into Sheffield. They have five farm operations that are growing cannabis, either field-grown or in greenhouses. And there's a variety of community views there. And Great Barrington has a number of retail operations. You know, if you don't have a commercial center, it probably doesn't make sense to have retail operations. You really do want to put them in a place where they're able to be accessed by car and you're able to manage traffic. So you want things off of state highways and things like that. So you guys will have to decide based on Unionville's characteristics, if it makes sense, to allow retail at some point in the future. But I'm happy if you have particular questions, just to take some questions. It's a little bit challenging to feed you too much information. I'm hoping that the state of New York will do a robust rulemaking process, that they'll have a lot of public engagement, that they'll seek a lot of public comment from communities, and that towns like yourself will be able to use things like Duchess County Planning to sort of funnel comments and questions and concerns up through to the state level.
So Brandy, as far as the cultivation, processing, the nurseries and that sort of thing, I haven't read where, we're waiting, but we haven't read where that's been finalized and approved yet. Is that?
So, yeah, so the legislation that was approved approves a number of different categories. It's about a dozen categories of cannabis facility type. And the opt-out is only for retail and onsite consumption.
Right, well, that we know.
Yeah, yeah.
But what about, I think there's, it's fuzzy to a lot of people as to when all the rules are going to come out because I'm not sure that people really understand how it's going to work yet. Would you agree with that?
That is absolutely fair. The state had outlined that they were going to create two different boards, an Office of Cannabis Management and an Office of Cannabis Control. How those boards are going to interact and how they are going to issue licenses for cannabis facilities is not clear yet because they have not undertaken the rulemaking process.
They haven't even opened that yet, right?
Correct, correct. And I have, for the last several months, been calling and emailing the Office of Cannabis Management, asking if they've got any kind of schedule. And there's been absolutely no response. And I think with the change in leadership at the governor level, that there's probably some sort of shift in the timeline. You know, just change in leadership is going to change timelines on things like that. But I think it is, I think if you're collecting information right now about how your community feels, what issues are concerned to the community, that you'll have a good basis for asking some really pointed questions as the rulemaking gets underway. And then understanding how, once the state establishes their floor for rules, where you guys need to fill in as a community to get the land use controls that you want to have in place.
So out of curiosity, what have you seen the cost of these licenses to be? What are they in Massachusetts or?
They are significant. It is hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars as far as licensing fees and approvals that the licensed facilities have to obtain prior to getting their licenses. It's a, in Massachusetts, it's a multi-step iterative process where an entity that wants to be licensed as a cannabis facility will register with the state and flag their interest. And then that initiates a process where they have to begin feeding the state the sort of stage one information about their proposed operation. So conceptually, what do they intend to do? Who is going to make up the organization? And then there's a significant amount of vetting that gets underway at the state level regarding the owners of these licenses. So they want to make sure that it's people that do not have a criminal record, that it's people that have good character. I mean, there's a, the rules in Massachusetts have this very robust character assessment and background check process that needs to be undertaken. And then, you know, once you pass that first like character piece with the state, you have to go to the community where you want to be licensed. So let's call it the town of Great Barrington. And you have to declare your intent to pursue a license for either a retail facility, a processing facility, a cultivation facility within the town and hold a public meeting. And that public meeting, you describe what your proposal is for operation within the town. You identify how it meets the local land use criteria and you solicit public comment. And that's a box that has to be checked with the state that you've engaged the public early on before you've even really identified a location or invested in the design services that you need to design your facility or get your land use approvals. Then you have to secure your local land use approvals. You have to go through your planning and zoning process and demonstrate that you have control of the land, that you have your site plan approval, and do all of that before you can go back to the state for your actual operating license. So it's the process, I would say, in Massachusetts, from, you know, I want to open a cannabis facility to I actually am operating cannabis facility is somewhere around 18 months to two years. So it's not a quick process. It's definitely a long process. And there are multiple places for public engagement. And there's a significant amount of background checks. And all of those things take a considerable amount of resources. You have to have meetings with the local law enforcement. You need to have meetings with local community groups that maybe support addiction prevention. You know, so there's just a tremendous amount of outreach that has to be done to support you getting that licensing.
Doesn't it sound, it sounds like it's a little out of reach for some small family farms, really, if you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in licensing fees, so the two don't?
Yeah, what has happened in, like you could use Sheffield as an example. And I'm going to be doing a presentation with the Duchess County Planning Federation that'll be on September 28th from 5:00 to 7:00. And Duchess County Planning Federation has put out a notice on that. It'll be via Zoom, so if any of you are interested in participating, there's no cost. It's myself and Keenan Bean. Keenan Bean's been doing a lot of research on the particulars of what is in the legislation and what it looks like that will translate to as far as reality for communities. And I'll be just bringing some perspectives from Western Mass communities that have similar characteristics to a lot of the Duchess County towns. And what we've seen is situations where operators will enter into a lease agreement with a farmer. And they'll say, we'll lease 40 acres in the back of your field. That 40 acres needs to have certain security and cameras and things like that. But that's what we've been seeing. And so I'll bring some photos of some of the facilities that are in the area.
And we sent the link out to the land use boards and the town board, of course. But one more question for me and that's it. I'm just wondering, you haven't heard that in New York, this is going to reside in Ag and Markets? It's going to be a separately handled division? I know the two committees have been set up or the two organizations, cannabis groups, but it's not, does it have anything to do with Ag and Markets? Because that's a pretty powerful group in our state.
Agreed, I agree that Ag and Markets is very powerful. I have not heard, and I'd be interested to hear that myself. I can tell you in Oregon and in Massachusetts, those are two states I have checked, they do not consider cannabis cultivation agricultural because of the highly regulated nature of it. And that can be a little bit tricky with your land use. If, you know, are you going to call it an agricultural use or is it a light industrial use? So I think that's yet to be determined in New York, but definitely something to keep an eye out for.
Okay. Pat, you have any questions? Anybody else have any questions? I have a feeling we'll have more as the months pass because this is going to be interesting.
Yeah, good luck, yeah. We'll, you know, we'll be working with the county just to try and keep an eye on how the state is progressing. And so if you're hooked into Duchess County Planning Federation's email blast, I'm sure you'll see some updated information.
Yeah, we do get them and everybody has the link. So thank you very much, Brandy.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Now, your insight and your info. And we'll be talking again.
Okay, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Bye now.
Bye-bye.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that more later in the meeting. So at this point, we are going to go into our regular format for the meeting with the town supervisor reports. And then we'll go to the board members. And then we've got some guests that we'll try to get to you. Right, as soon as we finish the normal reports, we have a public comment and we're going to start with you, okay? And then we'll go through the rest of the agenda. So really, I'm just going to go through this way. We'll go through the reporting. The town board members have the hard copy this time of the financial reports. And you can see from our cash flow report that we're at 104% of cash in in the month of August and we're at about 89% of the expenses. So we've had a pretty robust summer and a pretty robust camp season and other departments as well. The performance versus budget is in your packet so that we can be looking at that as we're talking through the budget issues we want to talk about tonight. As far as cash balances, we have $3,877,327 in the general fund and $321,625 in highway. Some of that, of course, is on reserve. The total is $4,198,952. One of the conversations we're going to be having as a board is taking those, the various sums and putting them into our capital projects, various capital projects buckets so that we will be ready to allocate those funds when those projects are coming up. So I've got the list almost finished from our previous discussions, but we'll have to move, you know, the money, certain monies that we've talked about allocating over into those projects fund to get it out of general fund. Not general fund, but the unallocated general fund soon, fund balance. The board members, you also have a list of all the abstracts for the month. You've got the list of the board, the building department's operations for the month. And we are going to talk tonight, as far as the budget goes, I want to talk to the, I've given the board the main subject that I want to, we're not really going to spend much time going on it because I'm leaving you with the figures and we're going to talk about it in depth at our work session on October 7th. But I wanted you to focus separately on revenue, which is what you have tonight. It shows the revenue for the general fund and the revenue for the highway fund. But the main thing is, is I've highlighted in yellow, just look at the tentative column because the ones to the right, they pre-fill automatically, so just ignore those. So we're just focusing on the tentative budget, which will be finished by September 30th. And then you can see if you moved left the year-to-date and then actuals from before. So I'm going to ask all of you to take a look at that. And because the main thing with our budget is, you can see from what COVID did to everybody, the main thing from our budget is that we have historically brought in more in revenue than we actually have brought in by levying taxes. So the revenue that the town has, the things that we do to produce revenue are really important because it helps keep the taxes down. COVID, you know, you kind of could illustrate what happened there. Things changed a lot. If we're worried about certain things with COVID or Delta or whatever else might come down the pipe to try to scare people into participating in things, it does deeply affect our revenue. And when we feel our revenue is going to be affected, then at some point you have to levy more in taxes. But we've had taxes flat for, I think, definitely three, probably four years. We also have ourselves in a situation which we want to remind everybody of that all of our departments, we have certain departments that are set up to lose money. There's just nothing, there's services to the community, our court system. You know, we're not near a highway. Don't, we don't have a lot of tickets. So our court that happens on Wednesday nights in Unionvale, that will never make money. It, it doesn't make enough to support itself, but the rest of it's perfect. It's, it's a service that we provide, and we have to provide legally.
Yeah.
We have a recycling center holds its own. Our, our recreation department now makes money. We used to lose money in there, but we've changed all these things around that have the potential to make money. And we work really hard at it every day to make sure that departments don't overspend so that our revenue line is good, and it's greater than our liabilities. So that when we, we sit down, as the board is going to be doing, and go through all the expenses, then we, you know, we don't have to raise taxes is what our wish is. So we're working on that, and I wanted all of you to see, these are the number. Now, I adjust these numbers a lot before here, between now and September thirtieth, when we have our tentative budget done. And when we talk through these, if you could take these with you and look at them, and we'll go through these during, we're going to start with revenue, which I think is our key thing. And, you know, we're, you know, as we've been doing since I got here and since you guys, you know, we, we all really agree that, you know, revenue always has to be more than your expenses, and, and we want to make sure that the, the revenue lines are good before we, then, then we'll attack expenses and make sure we're in the plus at the end. A little bit in the plus, but we want to, the main goal is to do the best we can for the taxpayers and try not to have to raise taxes. But if we don't rate, we haven't raised taxes for three years, probably four years. You, you know, at, at some point, well, we've got such a good, healthy fund balance, we have choices we might not have otherwise. So we're in a really good spot. But it may be that some of the things we have coming up, we're going to talk to high, Mr. Cady tonight about some things with highway and other things that the department has to put on their list that I'll share with you in October. It's going to be a real balancing act this year. So anyway, take a look at that, and we'll, we'll go through it in depth on the seventh. And I think, in addition, I wanted to make sure that everybody got copies of the audits. So, so the good thing about our audits, so our CPA Ted Exler returned them, and everybody has the cash audits, and then the, what they call the supervisors' audits, which are the full audits for the town. And the good news is, when we're, when you're, it's good to know this when you're starting the budget process, that our, everything was so clean. He said, I didn't even write you a management letter for the town books. He said, everything was perfect. There was one thing in the tax, the town clerks from, we had been leaving it on there since two thousand and sixteen, I think he said, and he goes, and it was having to do with some recreation fees that were, you know, we got paid twice or something like that. And he said, could you just clean that up? So we've been carrying it. So we're going to go ahead and take care of that, and that was, it's, it's, it's old.
For five years, it's been.
It's been sitting in, yeah, it was in last year's audit, too. We just didn't clear it up because I wasn't sure exactly how to do it, to be honest, because it was, there was a little bit of cash left over. But, so he said, okay, close it down. So we're going to close that down. And like, for example, there's a refund check in there that we need to send to somebody that was hanging out, you know, little things like that. So anyway, but the town books are in great shape. No management letter, nothing. Said we were terrific. So I think that's really a good sign for us as we begin the budget season. Now, I'd also, I'd also like to go through a few things tonight. One is, of course, some correspondence that I think everybody would be interested in. I have to read one because it came into a different email that I, I couldn't print. But we got a, a really nice, I'm just going to read the things that have come to, I haven't, don't have all of them, but I was able to get some of them. First of all, one of the residents under the heading correspondent, he wrote about the NRI that we mentioned, everybody to please go in and look at the natural resource inventory and send some comments into Aki Bush, who was the chair of the CAC. And this gentleman wrote, and he sent it to me, so that's why I have it for a correspondent. "A stunningly detailed and comprehensive collection of the nature's gift to our townlands. I cannot even imagine the amount of work involved in collecting codifying, categorizing, and presenting it in a document that runs over a hundred pages and which also reflects the months of dedicated work. Absolutely amazing." And I thought it was, it was a nice note, and he recognized how much work it got into that. Yeah, lovely, yeah, nice summary. I also wanted to read, I got two other interesting things, and then I got a, a nice email from a wood guy, it says handle, an email. "Dear Julia, this is for our Girl Scout. We'll be talking tonight about the reforestation. Said, I think what you are doing for the town of Unionvale and your Silver Award is admirable. You will accomplish not only earning your Silver Award, but also make the park in Unionvale beautiful for years to come. Maureen and I will contribute two hundred dollars to your project. I will drop off the check on Monday. Good luck." And indeed, he did, didn't he? So I mean, Andrea, I'm looking at Andrea. He did. He dropped it off and handed it to the town clerk, which is really nice. I think there are people that like that project. Got a nice letter from the president of, of the seniors, Jamie Zola, who wanted to write on behalf of all the members of the seniors. We stopped in, we had lunch with them, and we ordered food. Andrea went and picked up, why did you have to go to the store and pick up some ice? We needed ice. We needed a few things, but they came in and we served them lunch. And they said, I personally thank you for providing a lunch and handling all that was involved in ordering and serving the food. I think that was the kicker. We really got them when we served them the food. But they had a delightful time. And I thought it was a really nice note, very professional. So thank you to the seniors for the lovely note. Now, here's one, the board will find this interesting. They got a letter from the Division of Budget, New York State. "Thank you for submitting your request to receive funds from the ARPA, the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund on behalf of your local government. The American Rescue Plan Act and the United States Department of Treasury guidelines provide that any remaining funds from any non-responsive municipalities should be distributed among the responsive municipalities in a subsequent distribution." In New York State, very few municipalities were non-responsive, I would think.
Yeah, why would they not be responsive?
As such, your municipality will receive an additional allocation of one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-nine cents. That brings your total allocation of four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and eighty-three cents. By summer of two thousand and twenty-two, this allocation will be made in the following payments. They, they split by fifty percent. I just thought you'd be interested to know. Can you imagine being the town board on the municipality who was unresponsive?
Yeah.
That would be a tough place to be because that's all gone now. They've already, they already sent it to our account. So, anyway, so that is another piece of interesting correspondence. Two other things. One, we sent out and have in our recycling center the St. Polly Textiles Clothing Shed. And it's out there now, and it's kind of off, so it allows a, a lot of room over there. And I had a couple of emails about it. I just wanted everybody to know that we switched out, and we talked to these people. They, they approached us about having our clothing. They take clothing, shoes, belts, purses, blankets, sheets, curtains, pillowcases, and stuffed animals. And they take all of that. And then basically, what their mission is, is to redistribute it to places mostly worldwide, it sounds like, that are reworn and used by people that need them. So this is an, an organization that actually pays us eight cents a pound or something. And they're a for-profit company, just so it's clear with everybody. And the reason we went this route is because they, we told them, we try it. We don't have a contract. We can stop at any time. But it would be nice if we got a small check for the recycling center. We'll save money, and it'll keep it in the recycling center and do good things with it. But also, you know, their mission is to keep these things out of the landfill and to really redistribute them. There is no shortage of clothing in the United States, apparently, with Walmart and other people producing some inexpensive, inexpensive things. But they do a fantastic job. And, and unlike some of the other providers we've had of just bins where the stuff gets piled up all around it because people don't pick it up on time and it's messy. It was one of the things the board asked about when we were talking about this. They pick up every single week, and I think they do a wonderful job in getting this out, keeping it out of landfills and getting it to the people who need it. We'd also gotten reports that some of our other suppliers were, you know, picking through the things and then throwing away things, and they reuse everything. So we feel good about this, and we're going to try it. And if anybody has a bad experience or you just approve, let us know. But otherwise, again, we're not locked in. We'll give it a shot. We'll see how it goes. And then the last piece of business is, there is an absolutely beautiful Timor Trail map that was, that is being distributed down in Timor Park. Soon as we get the right, we're going to get a little write-up. This was also, the Girl Scouts are just killing it this year, I have to tell you. This was also a Girl Scout project. She took our old map, and she, and I don't even have her name. I apologize because I'm. Who is it?
Clara Sundlaw.
Clara Sundlaw. Well, thank you very much. So thank you to Clara Sundlaw. We're going to write her up and send it out to everybody when Jake was going to give me a little overview, our park manager. It's beautiful. I mean, look at this map. I don't know if people can see it.
A good detailed work.
Great detail, and I just want to thank Clara and the Girl Scouts for doing such wonderful work this year. We really appreciate it. So that is available for people for distribution. So congratulations and thank you. At that point, I'm going to conclude and ask for board member reports. Councilman Welsh?
Yeah, I've been looking into this whole cannabis legalization, and it is a major change for the whole state. Of course, we're part of the state, so it's going to be a change for Unionville. As Brandy mentioned, may not have people licensing their land in this town to grow it, but they may be a larger group that will license, get a license and rent land throughout the town or the county or wherever. So it could really have an impact on us as far as that's concerned. And anyone who's driven by Knox and Road last September or so, I'm sure got a bit strong whiff of what cannabis smells like when it's blooming. And people over there were very unhappy with the odor, so it's not a favorable thing as far as I know.
Yeah, it's an important topic.
But there's a lot we have to learn, this whole thing, so we can adjust ways to deal with it.
Thank you. We'll keep studying.
Yeah.
And our land use boards are, too, and we'll have a very collaborative session. Councilman McGibney, thanks, John.
Only thing I got is October first coming up this Sunday. Spring weather's supposed to be good.
It is, yes. Thank you. Do we have that fire department team we were talking about? I think we do, don't we? That's right. You could, can you cover that during your report? I think this is something that bears repeating. All right. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Frazier.
Also mentioned, the COVID Fest is an annual event. Everybody has fun. And it's the first we've been able to do it since the COVID isolation. Chance to get out of the house and enjoy yourself. Hope to see everybody there.
Sunday. That's great. Thank you. Okay, next up, very important tonight, our town highway superintendent report. Mr. Cady?
There we go. Okay.
A little louder. Let me just, let me turn this on.
Go ahead. Okay, so we have a few issues through town now in the highway. Our major issue at this particular point is our back building, which was constructed in nineteen ninety-five. The roof trusses have failed. Roof is settled. The ceiling inside the building is settled. We pretty much evacuated everything out of the building. I'm working with the supplier of the building. It was a kit building to try and get some sense of warranty. I've got several contractors that we're talking with to try to get a price repairs. The town's insurance adjusting company is coming out tomorrow. Basically, the town's engineer inspected it Tuesday morning. And as per their inspection, they seem to think that our trusses are dry-rotted, not moisture-rotting, which is pretty significant. So we're looking at why they did that. But if the insurance doesn't cover everything, we may be looking for substantial build for this repair. Appears as though we may be changing out all the trusses in the building. In order to do that, we're going to have to take the entire roof structure off and replace it. It's a major project. I'm working again with the manufacturer. Lead time for the trusses, once we pull the trigger and order them, are four to six weeks. If we go to a local vendor, lumberyard in the area, they're anywhere from eight to ten weeks. We'll, let's, I think in November end of, which is pretty much the start of winter. The building stores all of our poly equipment. So it's an essential building to the highway department. So it's something, it's a matter we have to take care of. That was discovered day after Labor Day, Tuesday morning. So we've been on top of it ever since. We are in close contact with the manufacturer. Hopefully, we can get some, some resolve out of this. I believe there is possibly warranty on the building, which I'm hoping, Jeff, if we can find it, maybe you can review it if we have some sort of grounds to go after the manufacturer. Okay, that was the major thing. The last major thing, I guess, we've had, as everyone knows, several very heavy rainstorms. We've lost a lot of road shoulders. As most everybody knows, my crew's quite small, four guys and almost fifty miles of road. So we are working on it. We have lost a few pipes. All the pipes that were lost have been changed out with larger pipes. I don't know if anybody noticed here on Duncan, we lost a significant pipe there in this last storm. We discovered it on Wednesday, had it changed out in time for the Bloom Fest festivities for Friday. So that was good news to our crew. They did a really good job changing it. That we've discovered the catch basin, the catch basin, culvert pipes under Cooper Drive. They're totally plugged. We tried to jet those out yesterday, meaning we used high-pressure water pressure to try and blow them out with no success. I have another company that has an auger, and we're going to try to clean those pipes out because it does create havoc on the road in heavy storms. Throughout the town, there were several areas where people's basements were flooded. Lawns are flooded, things of this nature. It's basically because of the intense rain we had, not the failure of the town's drainage system. I've been getting calls that, you know, we've got to do something, but when you get four inches rain in an hour and a half, six inches rain over twenty-four hours, I don't know any drains, just. I don't, I just don't have an answer for them. Things that we're doing, obviously, was trying to repair the roads. And we are still working on changing pipes, and we're getting our truck fleet ready for the winter. So hopefully, with a, with a rough summer, we'll have a milder winter. That's all I got.
That's a lot. You guys have been very busy. Thank you. You had a lot of people to get to, and you guys got to them efficiently, and we really thank you for that. You've done a great job through these storms.
I know they were out all hours of the night that last bad storm we had.
Yeah, it's just been a tough road.
Most of the night.
Yeah, but thank, we thank you. And, you know, we did send in that FEMA report. We don't know what will happen there, but, you know, something could happen, which, something would be better than nothing, exactly. So we will do that. We'll let everybody know if we hear back from them. How about that?
Yeah, on, on that, I did hear that the county met the threshold.
They did, yeah.
Qualified, so.
The county met it. That's why they insisted that we submit stuff.
I think the last time was over, well, over a year before we got the money.
Right. It, it can be a while, but it does sound like it is going to go through and you can see something.
You know, it's frustrating, though, that first storm that Ed's referring to, the four inches in an hour and a half, the county didn't meet the threshold on that one. And we had more severe damage than.
It was worse in Unionville. That was a July seventeenth storm. It was worse in Unionville and other places.
In Washington, maybe, but not the rest. So how did Wapanda do, Steve?
Highways didn't really have any damage, but I had close to a hundred thousand dollars damage within the parks. I had three parks that were underwater and lost several base, base blocks.
Oh, wow. So you've, you've had your hands full. All right. Well, Mr. Cady, thank you very much. We appreciate your report. At this point, I'm going to go over to town clerk and ask Clerk Casey if she would like to.
Yeah, so we submitted the two local laws that we passed so far this year, which were for best value and also changing the residency requirement in deputy town clerk. So those have been sent to the state. And I also wanted to comment on the St. Polly Textile Shed because I'm a really big fan. I used it last weekend. And the opening is so much more sufficient than the openings for the other former bins. It's a very wide hole in the shed. And they just asked that you make sure you bag your items and double, you know, make sure it's tied so that nothing falls out. But I thought it was really a very neat-looking and a good addition for them.
You might have been our first contributor.
That's all I have.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. At this moment, we're going to open up. At this moment, we're going to open up for public comments on agenda items. And we're going to start with Molly McMorris, who looks like a Girl Scout to me, and I think she's here to talk about another great project. Do you want to come up? Andrea, do you want to help her with that laptop? Are you, Molly? Have you done Zoom? And I just?
Yeah, if you want to mute yourself, video, you're already muted.
There you go. Hi, Molly.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Molly McMorris. I am a senior at Milbrook High School, a Girl Scout ambassador and a town of Unionville resident. In addition to being a lifelong resident, my parents were both raised in the town, attending Milbrook and Arlington schools. They have been involved in countless organizations, including scouts, the fire department, recreation, sports and local charities. They have instilled in me a love of this community and the importance of being involved to make a difference in the town. I'm here this evening to share with the board and the town my Girl Scout Gold's Award project proposal. Having been involved in Girl Scouts since kindergarten, I have participated in many town events, including parades and ceremonies, charity 5Ks and community days. One such event that I value is the annual placement and removal of flags on the graves of veterans. It was through this event that I first visited the Burbank Cemetery, a place that I drive by or walk past on nearly a daily basis, but never really gave much thought about. It was while walking through the cemetery that I noted the names of families that my parents spoke highly of and shared stories about from when they were kids. I saw the graves of neighbors who I remembered fondly, and I noted the generations of Unionville families who chose the cemetery as their final resting place. It was through this experience that I chose the Burbank Cemetery as the focus of my Girl Scout Gold's Award. The goal of my Girl Scout Gold's Award project is the beautification of the cemetery. Ultimately, my hope is to repair and paint the fence and gatehouse, install planting boxes at the entrance, as well as adding a compost area and arranging for garbage to be collected regularly. Specifically for my project, I'll be looking for volunteers to donate paint and other building supplies. I'll be organizing volunteers to come on scheduled days to help with the repairs, building and painting. I'll be looking to meet with the community groups and members to help with the garbage collection and maintenance once the project is complete. While my plan may be ambitious, I'm aware that I will need the support of the community to be successful. My hope is that as I move forward with planning and preparing, that I can receive support from the town board through advertising the project and help with any permission and logistical concerns that may arise. Additionally, my purpose for coming this evening is also to begin getting the word out to the public as I organize donations and volunteers. For those who wish to have more information, I can be contacted at 845-677-0894 or mollysgoldaward@gmail.com. Lastly, although my project is focused on the Burbank Cemetery, my hope is that through working closely with the town board and residents, that we can partner on other community-based projects in the future. Thank you for your time and attention. I look forward to working with you all.
Very nice. What a great project.
Yes, thanks for your ambition.
Thank you.
Good idea.
We will help you in any way we can.
Thank you.
We'll talk again, you know, outside of the meeting. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know, everybody in Burbank is going to thank you because, you know, easily. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so we have comments on agenda items. Anybody? No. Okay, so next we'll go to our board and committee reports. And I believe we have on with us, under the heading of the CAC, which is where this is going to reside in the future, one of our important councils. It's the reforestation project by Julia Hogan Camp. And I think, Julia, you're on, aren't you? There you are. She needs to unmute. Hi, Julia. You're unmuted. Great.
Hello.
Make sure we can hear you. All right, try again.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, now we can hear you.
Okay.
So you're here to give us an update?
I am.
Okay.
So for those of you that don't know, I am Julia Hogan Camp, and I'm a Girl Scout currently working on my Silver Award. A few months ago, I went to meet with Supervisor Moss, and we came up with a project that seemed sustainable and is also realistic because it is achievable. Each year, more and more trees are taken down, whether it be because there are hazards, surpassing cars, storms or diseases. So we are going to start a new program, the reforestation of Unionville. The Girl Scouts are going to implement this new program with the help of volunteers, including members of local forage groups. You are welcome to come join us at 9:00 AM this Saturday, September 18th, the day before Oktoberfest. We have all the trees needed. We will be thanking everyone who contributed soon. If you would like to purchase any trees for your home, you're welcome to this Saturday. I would like to thank the town staff, members of the CAC, and Brian Skorslick, the Executive Director of Dutchess County Soil and Water. If you have any questions, feel free to email treesfortimeor@gmail.com.
TreesforTimeor@gmail.com. Perfect. Now, I have to ask you a question. Julie, did you raise some money from people? Because it looks, sounds like some people, you don't have to tell us who, but is there a dollar amount you've gotten close to? Do you know what that is?
Right now, we're around a $500 amount that we've raised. I'm not definite on the exact, but I know it's somewhere in the 500s.
That's fantastic. Yeah, that's good. That almost pays for 119 trees, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Well, that's it.
119 was the goal.
Yeah, that's great. And you still, and you can still collect money even after the trees are planted. So that's not a problem. People can continue to send it in for you. And it's Saturday morning, and you're going to be here directing the show at 8:45, nine o'clock, that kind of thing? And everybody invited? Anybody who wants to dig can come?
Yeah, any volunteers, if you want to come in and help, you're welcome to bring your brothers, your fathers.
The heavy lifters. And where should, is everybody going to meet?
We're all going to meet at the Unionville Town Hall. You're actually there right now.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
We're, yeah, so we're going to, and all the trees will be here tomorrow afternoon if you're going to come by and check them out. So.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Does anybody have any questions, Julia? Nope. All right, Julia, we're very much looking forward to this.
Very nice.
I think 90 of those trees are going in Timor Park, like a bunch of them. So we'll have a, we'll see you tomorrow and Saturday morning. Thank you, Julia. We really appreciate it. Take care. See you Saturday. Okay, next up, our departmental reports. We'll start with Parks. Councilman Frazier, do you mind taking that one?
Okay, tennis courts in the park have been refinished. I really want to thank Victor and his team. They did a great job. The courts look amazing. We are in full swing getting ready for Oktoberfest. That is this Sunday, September 19th, from noon to 7:00 PM. There'll be food, desserts, German music, German dancers, as well as some new additions like barrel racing competition, Stein hoisting and the chicken dance. We have a course laid out for our barrel racing competition. Be sure to put your team together. The weather is looking great for Sunday. I hope to see everyone there. We have a great Girl Scout project happening this Saturday morning at the town hall that we just heard about. There will be trees planted all around Unionville, including Timor and Godfrey Park. The basketball courts at Godfrey Park have been sealed in line by Gerald Morrow and his team, and they look great. The balloon fest went off well over Labor Day weekend, and they all had a great turnout for a great event, and the weather was great. And as I have said, this whole season, it continues to rain and the grass continues to grow.
True. So next up, we have a recreation report from Allison Crowe. Councilman McGinnity, can you share that one with us?
We had a successful two weeks of TGTT after the end of summer camp with a great turnout, a lot of new faces. All had its final day of the season on Labor Day. We are now focusing on our after-school program as well as organization and preparation for next summer. Registration is open online for the after-school program.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next up on our list is Oktoberfest. I want to, the board, we need to talk about a couple of things just to make sure everybody's on, that, you know, if we need help with certain things. I've got materials from Wendy. Everybody's been working so hard that everybody's still getting ready. They're coming in tomorrow. They're coming in on Saturday. So just to make sure the board is confident, you know, we've got it all arranged. We're, you know, for example, we've got two constables working with the park staff for parking on Saturday, so that should be fine. Over in admissions, we've allowed people to prepay for the first time online. We actually had like over 50 people do it. And we didn't really advertise it that much, so we were impressed that people did it. So next year, we'll probably piece that up and start it a little bit earlier. That worked out well. This year, just so you guys, the board knows that the, there's going to be two bands this year. There's going to be a yellow band that says over 21 on it. And then there's going to be an orange band that means nothing other than they're, they're less than 21. And it'd be an easy way, it just shows that they paid. So it'd be an easy way to, yeah, to identify people when they come up to get beer to make sure that we're, we're on that one as we usually are. There were things, you have an overview of what's being served and what's, you know, the things that Jake mentioned in his report. We have the NFL room again with two types of beer on tap there. So as far as the board goes, I think Wendy and the staff that are coordinating this, they would like to, they're hoping that people, you know, some of the board will be at admissions and saying hello. We'll be, I know people will be at the beer tapping. And then also, we'll be giving, the board members will be giving out the awards for these wonderful competitions. I think you have to, you know, when you see it, that barrel racing alley is 75 yards long. I mean, it is, it just went, I took a picture of it. You couldn't even see the people at the other. It's really, so it's a relay team with four people. So the two go down and the two others come back. It's not the easiest thing, but the prizes are great. There'll be a lot of people enjoying these competitions. I think it'll be a lot of fun. The, the thing that we need to talk about, and we can talk about it, is things like the, you know, number of drink tickets we give to various people, like, for example, the band. You know, those are things that we can talk about that morning, but we'll probably get together briefly cover up, cover issues like that to make sure we're all set and we give the staff good direction. And while we're talking about Oktoberfest, and if you guys have any questions, we've got all, we got the barrel racing signup sheet. We've got lots of information here given to me by Wendy today. But we just had that big event last week, and I neglected at the beginning, so I wanted to make sure I covered it now. One, I want to thank the state, state police because they were very nice to give us a presence, and we felt comfortable with them. There was private security. We had our own constables. But we approached the state troopers and said we'd like some, and actually Dan McMorris came over and met with us and set it all up for us. So we had state police presence all weekend, which was, I think, comforting.
Well, very effective, yeah.
Seeing the uniforms and our constables were there, and the constables reported to me that they were busy doing good neighborly thing. They really enjoyed it. Like they, you know, they gave, Rob Casey gave people rides on that machine that didn't feel like walking. Now, little boys got lost from mom, and mom couldn't find them, and mom was very upset. And then he, the little boy comes running out of the boys' room, the men's room, and they, you know, got the two of them back together. But they did that constantly all weekend, but there was nothing bad that happened. Everybody had a good time. I really want to thank not only the state police, but our own constables for doing a terrific job. I thought they were accessible and people liked them being there. Back to Oktoberfest, I want to thank Vicki and Dennis Dunning, who are one of the sponsors of Oktoberfest and have actually contributed. They, you know, they donated the shirts for the winners of the barrel racing contest after they designed them with Wendy's help. And I mean, they're also very generous to us with camp shirts and things like that.
They're generous.
Yeah, they're really, really nice. So I want to thank Vicki and Dennis Dunning for what they're doing for us with Oktoberfest. And then, of course, I think we should thank the Chamber of Commerce. Our event is more for us at Unionville, and it will compare nothing to the balloon festival from last weekend. It's more of a hometown thing. But they did a great job organizing. So we want to thank them and Frank Costello. Now, do you, does anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to comment on that, on how well organized it was in spite of the weather that we had just days previous to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He had a great plan B to put it all together, worked that well.
Yeah. And he saved our fields. He wasn't even pushy about, he promised us all this parking. I mean, the fields were underwater, and he was very respectful and they're very good partners.
Yeah.
So thanks for mentioning that. He's absolutely right. Okay. Let's see, let me put this back here. And next up, old business, Furnace Pond Dam. So we have been unable to do the boring test because of the level of water over there. So we're trying to figure out what to do next. There's still plenty of time to do it. We've been watching it, monitoring it. We have sent all of the over-the-top pictures. Actually, during that last big rush of water, the, the water was very, you know, flowing heavily over that dam, but it wasn't, it just was straight path. Wasn't all over the spillway. It was, it seemed to be.
Did its job.
Yeah, it definitely did its job. So we'll keep you posted. But right now, it's been too high for them to do what they need to do. We've sent them a bunch of new pictures. They're trying to figure out if there's another way to do it that's not cost prohibitive. I mean, some of these tests can be, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. They're trying to work with us on this, so please stay tuned. We're, we're on it. We want to stay on top of it, but it's just the weather hasn't cooperated that much this year. They wanted us to siphon the water out to the dam so you could see the bottom of the, where the controls are that are rusted and haven't been used in 100 years. They wanted the water to go down there, and we just can't do it this year. So anyway, we're going to keep working with them. We'll keep everybody posted. All right? Next up, our Unionville Solar Development on Route 55. Congratulations. They went live today.
Oh, they did?
Today. So there were some holdups with Central Hudson and some various things. They were.
My lights were a little brighter.
Yeah. They were, they were very excited. It was a little bittersweet for them because it's like two months overdue. There were all, there are issues that came up. There was a computer glitch, and there were things that happened. And so they were, you know, they, they want to be live as soon as possible, and then they got delayed an extra two weeks by Central Hudson. It happens. It doesn't happen to them very often, though, and they were, they were mentioning that. They certainly apologized for the delay to us. The important thing for residents to know is that while the power was generated, starts generating today, it takes 30 to 60 days for it to reflect on anybody, the people that have signed up to get credits. And, and so what happens is it takes 30 to 60 days, depending on, you said, these companies always take a while to get started, and then it'll be 30, every 30 days like clockwork. So they'll see it on their bill. It'll be, and you'll see the 10% discount. You get one bill from one company because Central Hudson doesn't want to do that administrative task. I don't blame them, but, so there'll be two, two bills that you get. One reflects the credits and one reflects the offset of the credits from Central Hudson. But thank goodness they're live today. We're planning a ribbon cutting. The owners, the, the development owners, Conductive Energy are going to be here with the board and other people, town residents. So we'll be doing, we're trying to get that scheduled soon. So keep, but they just got it live today, so we're going to start planning. Now.
Don't forget, too, all residents will benefit from the offset of tax money needed to run the town because we're going to, we're getting income from that on a regular basis.
Yep, just in time. Because once we allocate the, the fund balance to the various infrastructure projects and have it all laid out there, you know, that'll be, that'll be a nice contribution for this year. Okay. Now, I think what I'm going to do is move the budget around unless anybody has an objection. And the reason is that we're going to have an executive session, and there are people here that want to speak. So I think what we'll do is we'll let the, we'll, we'll take public comments on town issues before we go to our resolution for the evening, which is the resolution of introduction for a new local law. Why don't we take the public comments on town issues, let you speak, and then if you choose, you can stay or not stay. But when we finish with this resolution, we're going to have to go into an executive session. And you might be waiting for a while. So rather than do that to you, would you like to make public comments, make some comments on town issues? Want to, yep. Let the Girl Scouts show you how to do it. She had no problem.
Excellent projects by the Girl Scouts. I was here for the last one. This one, I think it's an excellent organization. Somewhere in the corner of my closet, I got a bunch of old Eagle Scout stuff, too. I'm here to talk about in general transparency. It's something I've brought forward a couple of times in the past. And I want to talk about, I'm going to try to read this so Andrea can get it afterwards for the, for the meeting minutes. And I'm going to give you my example. My recent example has to do with FOIL, which is the Freedom of Information law. If anybody's not familiar with that. The purpose of the law is, says specifically, "The people's right to know the process of governmental decision-making and to review the documents and statistics leading to determinations is basic to our society." Access to such information. Access to such information should not be thwarted by shrouding it with a cloak of secrecy or confidentiality." I got frustrated myself a couple of months ago and I submitted a FOIL request. Some of you in the board might be familiar with that. Thank you Andrea, but you just responded, I think, the next day acknowledging you got it. Probably a couple of weeks after that, I got something from Andrea saying, "It's a workup." So thank you for kind of keeping me abreast. About a month or so after that, I received a pretty long document in response to that request. The document was longer than it probably needed to be. It was lots, a lot of repetitive information there, but again, a lot of work went into that, so thank you. But when I looked at it, there were some things that I expected to see, about half a dozen examples I gave back, I thought they should have been there, but wasn't there. And then over the next couple of months, it was like pour on teeth, trying to get additional documents. I did receive six additional documents after that time, uh, in response to the request. So why they weren't in the first response, I don't know. But as I was going through that, that lengthy process, I realized, hey, there might be some benefit if I did the same thing with New York State. So I sent a FOIL request to New York State on a topic that I'm not going to, not going to get into. And New York State gave me some things, pretty, pretty prompt matter, but one of the things they gave me, uh, was not in what the town gave me. And it's just curious to me, it happened to be something that was authored and sent by a member of the town board to the state that minimized the issue that I was, I was trying to get information. So my, I guess, my point is that, um, I personally, I think others would like to see more transparency on certain things. Again, to kind of reread the purpose of the law, "Access to such information should not be thwarted by shrouding it with a cloak of secrecy or confidentiality." Some of the responses I got had to do with, well, this is not covered by FOIL. And indeed, one of them was right. That's absolutely, absolutely right. But one of the other responses was, I mean, I, I asked for complaints. I asked for any complaints on certain things and the response I got was they were deleted. When I look at the record retention requirements placed at that time, they shouldn't have been deleted. So, um, again, frustration on my part, I think frustration on others with general transparency. I'll, uh, I'll kind of leave it at that. I would like to ask some questions because my three minutes are going to be, are going to be up. Uh, one, what can?
Then, you know, we're not answering questions. You're just, you're just going to lay out.
Exactly. My questions are, one, what can the town, or what should the town do to increase transparency on a number of different topics? And two, what can or should the town do to make sure that things that are important don't get deleted? So I've probably taken my three minutes. I don't expect any answers now. I know this is not an interactive conversation. I did script it, I didn't, I didn't bore you with reading it, but I'll give, I'll give this to Andrea so she can actually do the meetings.
So just so you, you understand Glenn, that the law for, um, complaints that are deemed to be solved or passed for emails is a year. And some of the things that you were asking for were well over a year. And, and also your request was a little confusing. We, we thought, we assumed you'd go to New York State and get the file from them, so there were some things that had been tossed out here, um, that we knew that you'd get from them. But for complaints that are dealt with and complaints that aren't, um, big problems because they have been dealt with, that, the, we hold those for one year and we've all checked with the authorities and that's what they say in New York State. Now, if we thought we were gonna, if, if we thought it was about the, like, for example, the records for the dam? If, if we were, that's okay. If we were saving records on the dam or things like this, what we would do is we'd save them forever. I've got, you know, files this wide on the dam, so it just depends. No, no, that's it, you're done. I'm making a comment on what you said. Next up, would anybody else? Well, I gave you that second one. The first one is, I, you know, you were asking about information about the holiday lights and we also gave you information during the town board meeting and our president, and our lawyer was there, so. No, I don't, I'm just telling you, you asked about a topic and I will tell you, no, I'm going to say one more thing, and that is that you were highly insulting to our building department head who felt that your questioning his background was, um, not appropriate. No, I'm responding to what you said. I get three minutes too. So you've had your three minutes. It says, I'm, I run the meeting, I get three minutes. So, um, it is important that you understand that the way you phrase your question can be difficult and, um, we don't want you to insult certain people when you send in your FOIL request, which is questioning his background and his ability to do his job and asking for those. And that stuff should come from New York State. But, oh, yeah, you did, in our view. That was our view. Now, would somebody else like to make a comment?
I would make a comment, it's not, um, transparency. I'm Jean Moore.
Hi Jean.
I've lived in the town for almost 50 years at my residence and there's some positive things that went on, but I have real serious concerns about the library situation because I think the town has not really, uh, taken care of the residents the way they should. I've got 13 questions and comments about the library situation. Number one, our residents have been restricted from having full library privileges at our neighboring libraries for more than a year because the town board declined to pay the required fees to the Mid Hudson Library Service even though the fees were in the approved budget. Number two, the library boards have the right and responsibility to claim hardship when their residents are paying to subsidize the residents of another town who are paying less than their fair share. Fair share is determined by the free direct access plan and is filed with the New York State Education Department. Under that ruling, our town has not been paying our fair share for library service. Number three, circulation has gone down, but as Betsy Moss pointed out, the numbers tend to be cyclical and as she didn't point out, could be affected by restrictions put on Unionville residents by the Mid Hudson Library Service. Number four, the number of library cards issued to Unionville residents is not an accurate account of library users. I did not know my own card had been purged from the system until I tried to use it and other Unionville residents also unknowingly had their cards purged. Number five, the actual amounts that have been requested that Unionville pay to have full library services in the past few years has been in the $77,000 to $80,000 range. The only actual figure for the future that Mid Hudson Library Service requested is a possibility of a 2% per year increase to cover cost of living increases. I have, uh, page three on this, it's a chart showing what the actual amounts would be over a period of 10 years into the future with that 2% increase. Six, the amount of 161,000 or 181,000 that has been referred to as equitable funding or market rate is a figure that Betsy has used as a grossly overstated scare tactic that has not been presented as a formal request from the Mid Hudson Library Service. Again, see page three on this. Seven, Betsy has suggested that the town of Unionville should pay less for library service than other towns because we have fewer commercial properties to help finance those services. However, libraries in other towns in the Mid Hudson Library System cannot charge less at our request just because we have fewer commercial properties than they have. We live in a town mostly agricultural or rural zoning. It is our choice and the choice of our town officials to do so. To visualize this, I put in a zoning map on page. Eight, almost 60% of Unionville residents who completed the Library Steering Committee survey indicated that library services are important to them. Only two respondents out of all of the other respondents said we should have our own library in the town of Unionville. Nine, we have been the only town in New York State paying funds to the four libraries, but does that matter? Since we have residents who use multiple libraries and the total amount requested is well below what taxpayers in those towns pay. Can I do the last three? Okay, thank you.
Wait, 15 seconds.
15 seconds, oh, okay. 10, is renovating the barn at Timor Park for the, a library a failed attempt to have a large beating space and just another way to commercialize Timor Park, which is against the covenant beating the park to the town? I have three others. I, my time is up, I understand that. I have papers, copies of it to give to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean, appreciate you coming. At some point, we need to respond to all those, um, probably.
I asked my name.
Oh, we have another.
I had asked that my name be included. I just wanted to read the rest of what Jean had. No, I forget where she left off, okay. Till insurance, she wrote, number 11. At 8:15 PM on April the 6th, 2017, Betsy Moss said, "First, let me say for families in Unionville who enjoy going to the library, it is important that they keep their free access and full privileges and it is very important to them and very important to the committee to recommend to the town board that they have those." This is the committee on the library. We're going back a few years here. If it was important to Betsy Moss then, why did the town board take away our free access and full privileges at any library in the whole Mid Hudson area? Number 12, supposedly three town residents are working on a plan to collect donations to renovate the barn at Timor Park to create a town library, which may not happen for five years or more without any guarantee of success, either for fundraising or for keeping costs under control. Will town residents still have a dearth of library privileges and end up paying higher taxes because of this, because of this speculative project? Number 13, how can our residents afford to pay not only the initial cost of 1.5 to $2 million to renovate the barn at Timor Park and then also pay for furnishings, computers, staffing, and all the other assorted costs that go along with yearly operating fee of over $100,000? I, I just want to say before, Betsy, when this young lady, who, who talked about, was it the Tree Girl Scout who talked about the, yes, the Tree Girl Scout?
Yeah.
Julie, I think, I don't remember. You asked her how much money she had been given already and she reported that. Several people have asked how much money has been accumulated by this committee of three and supposedly they've added more people. And when it comes to money, I can hear pretty well and I haven't heard a number. I haven't seen anything in writing.
I have not either, so we'll.
Well, put me on that committee and we're going to find out.
We will invite them in and have them talk to us about it.
That, that would be very important. But again, my view, we, we should belong to the Mid Hudson Library System.
I think.
It's going to be a lot cheaper.
So I think, um, first of all, this is a very in-depth subject and we will schedule a different time to talk about it. Because there were a lot of things that were incorrect and what was just said. But if you're going to talk about that Library Steering Committee, I'll refresh everybody's memory, at the end of that 13-month process, the Library Steering Committee recommended that we pay the four libraries for cardholders only. And that, that was part, that was the recommendation and they even had a dollar amount in the Excel spreadsheet. So you can't pick and choose what you want to use. We've already been, gone into a new administration, but if you're going to use some of their information, maybe you should consider using the recommendation. I think, I think what you're, you raised a lot of questions, but there was a lot of inaccuracies in what you said. Well, I think we'll respond to you and I think we should have a meeting about it. We'll get the information out, we can have a meeting to discuss it. It's very complicated and there's a lot of misinformation. And I think to be fair to everybody, because the cardholders are in the minority in the town. It's not that it's not important, but to be fair to everybody, we should have an open conversation. It should be.
It should be.
We all agree. Thank you for coming and thank you for that. You put a lot of work into that, Jean. We appreciate it. Okay, we will follow up with that. Since I think we've, um, does anybody else want to say anything? Okay, um, at this point then, I think I buried my agenda, can I say?
Next is our local law.
Is it a resolution? Okay, so this is, um, proposed local law number three for 2021. And this is our Resolution of Introduction. Councilman Welsh, would you like to read that?
Town of Unionville Propose Local Law Number Three for 2021. The local law to opt out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite consumption sites as authorized under New York State Cannabis Law Article Four. Being enacted by the town board of the Town of Unionville as follows. Section One, Legislative Interest. Is the intent of this local law to opt out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption sites in the town of Unionville that would otherwise be allowed under Cannabis Law Article Four? Section Two, Authority. This local law is adopted pursuant to Cannabis Local Law 131, Section 131, which expressly authorizes the town board to adopt a local law requesting the Cannabis Control Board to prohibit the establishment of cannabis retail dispensary licenses and/or onsite consumption licenses within the jurisdiction of the town and is subject to permissive referendum, procedure for which is governed by Municipal Home Rule Law, Section 24. Section Three, Local Opt Out. Town Board of the Town of Unionville hereby opts out of following cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption sites from being established and operated within the town's jurisdiction. Section Four, Servability. Any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or the application thereof to any person, individual, firm, or corporation or circumstance shall be held by any court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid or unconstitutional. Such order to judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder thereof, but shall be confirmed in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law, or in its application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which such order of judgment shall be rendered. Section Five, Permissive Referendum/Referendum on Petition. This local law is subject to permissive referendum on petition in accordance with Cannabis Law Section 131 and the procedure outlined in Municipal Home Rule Law, Section 24. Section Six, Effective Date. This local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with New York State Secretary of State. Assistant Moss advised the town board pursuant to the Municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York, it will be necessary to hold a public hearing upon this local law.
Okay, so would you read the, um, resolution and we'll come back and?
Okay.
Do a roll call vote?
Okay. Whereas on September 16th, 2021,
John Welsh.
John Welsh has introduced this local law to the Town of Unionville to be known as Local Law Number Three of 2021 entitled, "A Local Law to Opt Out of the Allowing Cannabis Retail Dispensaries and Onsite Consumption Sites as Authorized Under New York State Cannabis Law Article Four." Be it resolved that a public hearing be held in relation to this proposed local law at which hearing persons is in interest shall have an opportunity to be heard, to be held at the Town Hall, 249 Duncan Road, La Grangeville, New York, 12540 on October 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM prevailing time, and that notice of said meeting shall be published in the official newspapers of general circulation in the Town of Unionville by the town clerk in these five days before such hearing, and such notice shall be in the following form. Did I read the notice?
If you wouldn't mind, go ahead and read that.
Notice of public hearing. Take notice that the town board of the Town of Unionville will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall, 249 Duncan Road, La Grangeville, New York, 12540 on October 21st, 2021 at 7 o'clock PM prevailing time on Local Law Number Three of 2021, a local law of the Town of Unionville, Dutchess County, New York whereby the town opts out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption sites from being established and operated within the town's jurisdiction as authorized by Cannabis Law Section 131. Take further notice that copies of the fore-said proposal of the law will be available for examination in the office of the clerk of Town of Unionville at the Town Hall, 249 Duncan Road, La Grangeville, New York between the hours of 8:30 and 4:00 PM on all business days between the date of this notice and the date of the public hearing. Take further notice that all persons interested, she'll have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the time and place fore-said.
Thank you, Councilman, may I have a second?
What is it that we're seconding?
Public hearing.
We're going to have a public hearing on October 21st and this is the Resolution of Introduction.
I'm just concerned, it sounds like it's the resolution itself as well. So we're only. So we're only voting on setting a public hearing at this point, is that correct?
See on the top of the second page, is necessary to hold a public hearing upon this local law. They offer the following resolution, which was seconded by Councilman.
Fraser.
Fraser. Okay. Now we'll have a roll call vote. Question of the adoption of the Florida Resolution. So Councilman Fraser.
Aye.
Councilman McGivney. Councilman Durlin is absent. Councilman Welsh.
Aye.
And Supervisor Moss.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this will be.
October 21st.
Yeah, the next board meeting will start at 7:00 PM. We have a budget hearing anyway. We'll have both hearings that night and we'll see if there's any public comment. Okay. All right. So at this point, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Yes.
What is your purpose?
Oh, litigation. We're talking about litigation and we need the room because that room is too small for us to be together. So you can come, you're more than welcome to come back when it's over. We'll open the door, but.
Thank you for moving forward.
John?
Yeah.
Well, Benny turned to come next week. He just wanted to chop a roll up and put it in five minutes.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks. Great, Welsh. Yeah, good. All right, thank you.
Jeff, you don't, I mean, this, we're going to be doing that review I told you about on the phone.
Okay.
So you don't need to, I mean, you don't need to stay because I'm just updating, yeah.
I will sign out, everybody. Have a good evening.
I'm sure you've had enough. Thanks. See you.
Good night.
Good night.